Can you hear us, Mr. Frank?
Yes, I can, but I can't see anything other than the kind of the logoed screen.
Oh, I think there is a little bit of a delay, so there it is.
There we go. Thank you. Well, I guess I'll call the meeting to order if you could hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay. Awesome. We'll go ahead and get started with item number one then. Actually, it'll be easier and more reliable if I turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim Bynum. That way, if we lose connectivity, we will still be able to run the meeting. Barbara, do you mind doing that?
Yeah. This is the regularly scheduled City Council work session. It's Monday, July 18th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. The first item on our agenda this morning is introduction of new city employees. So I'll turn it over to our HR Director, Terry Wilcox.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Right, this morning, it is my great pleasure to have department heads introduce this newest, smart group of new employees.
Hi, everyone. So today I have the pleasure and opportunity of introducing Chris Wharton. Chris is our new customer service and civilian report taker with the City of Montrose. And so I think, so I don't butcher it, I'm just going to ask you to say a few words about yourself.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Chris Wharton, originally born in London, England. Back in 1990, I moved to San Diego, California. Eventually, I started working for the City of San Diego. Worked 24 years in the police department there as a civilian. 12 years working in special events and about seven years working as a police code compliance officer. Decided to retire, moved to Southern Utah. And after going through last summer there with the heat, decided that was not where I wanted to be for my retirement. So eventually, I found Montrose, and I've been here for a month and enjoying it and just looking forward to the weather and doing some great hiking here. Thank you very much.
Welcome. It sounds like we're lucky to have you with all your experience.
Okay, I have a question here. What is the responsibilities of a civilian report-taking technician? What would your job consist of?
So my responsibility is on the front line when the public walk in to City Hall currently and then obviously the new police building. Taking whatever the person's questions is, but mainly issuing reports that are requested online or in person and the other questions police-related. And obviously, if they don't need the police department referring to City Hall.
So we have our online recording system. And so instead of using a police officer and tying up a police officer to take some more of the minor incident reports, our public can get online and file those reports themselves. Or if they don't feel comfortable using that system, they can come into the police department and Chris would be one of those individuals that helps walk them through that process or actually takes that report forward.
And then from that, it goes to a police officer or something to be handled?
So it's actually reviewed through our report system. And then if there is, if there is leads that need to be followed up, because, you know, you may file this report and you don't know that we've got a lead because it happened to someone else. And so then it would be assigned to a police officer.
But also, it seems like it's really handy, like when my car window was broken, but nothing was stolen. My insurance wanted a police report, but it didn't need to tie up an officer to drive out, look at my broken window and write it all up.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the biggest helps that it's been is for our private property traffic crashes, where you need a report for your insurance, but you don't necessarily need a police officer to handle it. So it's given us some more time to respond to our more serious calls.
Counsel, I'm excited to announce our newest person on the IT team, our new GIS analyst. We've had this position open for a long time, as you've known, and we've had really unqualified candidates coming through. So we thought, well, we'll post it one more time and see what we have. And then if we need to, we can reassess. And we just had an embarrassment of riches, just a lot of really qualified candidates on this last time. And through the process, Allison kind of bubbled up to the top. It was the obvious choice. So we're glad to have Allison on the team. She's fitting in really well with our merry band of misfits. And I'll let her tell you a little bit about herself and her background.
Hi, everyone. My name's Allison Dahl. I'm originally from Illinois, and my background in college was geology and environmental health. From there, I moved to the Denver area. And in Denver, I was working oil and gas industry, doing a lot of field work, environmental assessments, and also GIS work. So yeah, that kind of brought me to Montrose, and I'm excited to be here.
We're glad to have you as part of the team. And Zach Johnson from Public Works actually had to work today, trash and recycle. They were a little sharp-handed, so we'll meet him next month. Lastly, I want to, do you want to do it, Dave? I know you're, okay, hold.
Okay, I'm pleased to announce three positions in utilities that we were able to fill, and they all started last week and stuff. The first one is Chris Ottinger, and I'll let Chris tell you a little bit about himself.
I'm Christopher Ottinger. I grew up in Georgia, worked in real estate. My background is development for senior housing. That's what I got into after college. Lived in Georgia and Florida, met my wife on eHarmy, decided I wanted to live in a place that was a little less humid. So I moved out here to Colorado Springs, lived there for a number of years doing lumber inspection and sawmills and treated lumber. That was mainly in the Midwest, so I'd have to fly out. So I have three young children at home, decided I need to have a little more of a local gig and found this utilities position, seemed like a good fit, and was recommended by an employee. Just very excited to be in Montrose and to stay here. This is, I moved here on purpose before I got this position. So just excited to be a part of the community at large. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Our next one is Will Phillips. And Will comes to us from the airport and another recommendation from another employee and stuff. So I'll let Will tell you about himself.
My name is Will Phillips, and I'm from North Carolina. And I moved out here three years ago and to attend CMU. I didn't actually do that, got a little sidetracked. I completed two years of college in North Carolina, and I moved out here in 2019. And I've just been working various types of construction. And I've been at the airport for the last year and a half. Now I'm out here pursuing this career opportunity. Thank you.
And our last one is Josh Hoskins. And Josh, we actually stole from our water, Tri-County Water. So he's got a little bit of experience with waters industry.
Hello, everybody. I'm originally from Iowa. I moved here back in November of last year. I don't know if you guys have visited Iowa, but it's very flat, very humid. So getting out here was a pretty good change of pace. There's a lot to do out here. As you said, I came here from Tri-County Water. I've been working there since the beginning of this year. I decided to come over here because it looks like the crew here is pretty happy with their jobs and it looks like there's a lot of opportunity for advancement. So that's why I'm doing here. Thanks.
Chris, Josh, and Will, welcome to the city team. We're glad to have you as part of our great Public Works team. Okay, next on our agenda this morning, item two, discussion items. The first item for discussion is our Metza delegation of authority ordinance. It feels like we just did this, but we do it once a year and it goes by quickly. So I will turn this over to our city attorney, Ben Morris.
Mr. City Attorney, excuse me, I serve as general counsel to Metza, so I think it's probably appropriate to not participate in this discussion.
Very well. Thank you for disclosing that, sir. Well, our Mayor Pro Tim has alluded to the reason I had wanted to discuss this. It does come up every year. And I was seeking direction from the council to see if you wanted to continue to see this every year or if you would like for me to design or change the ordinance that we use in a way that would allow us to just have it approved in perpetuity, perhaps with an option to bring it back should you ever wish to do so annually again. I'm not sure how familiar you all are with Metza and what they do and where they came from. I can go into some background on that if you wish. Do you have a desire there or would you like for me to just?
Yeah, please just, that's one of my questions. Who are?
Sure, okay. So it's the Montrose Emergency Telephone System Association. It was organized in 1989 between several municipalities in Montrose County originally, Nucla and Naterita, the Nucla-Nateria Fire Department, Norwood Fire District, Town of Olathe. It has evolved several times over the years. It has a long history with different organizations coming and going. I think we roped in San Miguel at one point and others. So it's a big group of different local governments that banded together to deal with the 911 system. That's what its focus is. We hired a 911 coordinator, Matt Gage, back in 2004. I drafted the original agreement for that that year. Matt was kind enough to be here to support me with any answers to technical questions about what his job actually entails, what he does on a daily basis to make 911 work for our community. He'll talk to you about that. I will be at a loss for the whiz-bang technical stuff. But the specific matter at hand is just purely a legal matter. If you look at the ordinance in your packets, the third-to-last "whereas" clause in the draft ordinance says that each member of Metza would annually pass a resolution imposing a charge under state law on each service user within the jurisdiction in an amount, together with any surplus funds carried forward, which is sufficient to fund the expenditures of the authority, or the member can delegate to the board for Metza the ability to set the rate. So I think we've taken an odd approach to this by delegating authority, but also specifying or limiting the amount of the fee. So it effectively makes it an annual thing for approval. And that's why Mayor Pro Tim Bynum brought that up first thing. She remembers it from last time. We can't really have it both ways, and so I think we just need to decide whether we want to continue to see it annually or just delegate the authority to set the surcharge back to Metza. If you want to take it back someday, I'd be glad to add language to that effect to an ordinance and get that to you for approval on an upcoming agenda at some point in the near future. Oh.
One thing I would like to point out is unless there's a change to the amount of the surcharge, it might be beneficial for us to actually go to perpetual attorney decided approval. I think that if there is a change to that rate, at that point, then I think we need to have a discussion about whether to bring it back before the council.
Well, if I may just very briefly jump in, that was going to be the punchline of my recommendation. I can end it there and just open it for questions.
Sorry for stealing your thunder.
No problem. And also, Matt is here. If anyone, Ed in particular, if you have any technical questions, he's here to help with that.
Okay. On these fees, each municipality or city, each organization uses, they pay a separate fee based on what?
I'm turning around. Matt, can you come and help us with that? Do we have that wireless mic or a mic for him somewhere? The mayor won't hear him if he's not near one.
And please start by introducing yourself if you would.
Test, test.
Good morning. Matt Gage, Director for Metza, Montrose Emergency Telephone Service Authority. The charge rate that we're talking about is imposed on every phone line, collected by the phone companies and then remitted to Metza monthly. I would add that with.
I guess so if the City of Montrose has the majority of the calls for the county, are they paying additional fees or is it all the same? For example, you're collecting a dollar for the lady?
181.
Okay. And that's a tax that's on all the phones in the area? And that fee goes directly to you guys? And do, basically, if I have a 911 call or you guys, do I have to pay extra for that or what?
No. So part of the idea behind this is that, remember when we all used to pay extra for long distance on our home phones and that's an add-on service? The ability to dial 911 and connect a call is an add-on service just like that. Rather than put the onus on someone at the time of a 911 call, this is a charge that is imposed monthly. Metza is responsible for then paying for 911 telephone service countywide, and we use the revenues from that charge to pay for that service in addition to a significant amount of support for Wesco Dispatch financially.
I suppose you guys have a budget every year for expenses and that sort of stuff?
Yes, sir. Annual budgets, annual financial audits and so forth.
Bylaws for operating? I imagine you have that also?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And are each one of these entities that you listed in this agreement, are they a member of the board? How many board members do you have?
We have 10 members of Metza. 10? Yes, sir.
Could you just kind of give me a quick rundown of where they're from? And I'm not interested in who they are.
Sure. City of Montrose, Montrose County, Town of Olathe, Town of Nucla, Town of Naterita, Montrose Fire Protection District, Olathe Fire Protection District, and the Nucla-Naterita Fire Protection District.
Who's our representative on the board from Montrose?
Chief Hall.
Who? Oh, okay.
So in addition to those local government entities, the Yray County Emergency Telephone Service Authority and the San Miguel Emergency Telephone Service Authority are also members of our board.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we have representation on the board and I feel confident with the police chief.
So if I may add, we anticipate this charge tracking inflation from here forward. The state legislature passed a law in 2020 that enabled the Colorado Public Utilities Commission, which regulates 911 telephone service under telecommunications. It enabled the PUC to adjust that charge threshold annually per inflation and the needs of the local 911 authorities. And so to not have the purchasing power of the funding that we give to Wesco Dispatch every year, for example, to prevent that from being depreciated, if you will, that purchasing power, I anticipate the Metza board will continue to increase that charge annually.
How often do the Public Utilities Commission raise this rate, do you know?
Just about every year.
Every two years?
Just about every year. Yep. Every year by October, they're required by state law to issue a decision setting the charge threshold. And then shortly after that, the Metza board will consider raising their rate, typically to match inflation, which, as you can tell right now, is probably pretty important.
I'm kind of in line with the mayor that if the rates go up, we should be able to look at it. So if however you want to write that into the contract or agreement or whatever, you know.
Yeah, I think I'll follow up on that. So as you design or write a new ordinance for the city, does that amount have like an escalation in it that would allow it to automatically go up a little? Or otherwise, we're going to be approving it every year if it's designed and if legislation is designed for that to adjust? So can you tell me a little more about the language?
Well, I think it's an either-or. We've kind of been trying to have it both ways. We were saying we're delegating the authority to the board to set the surcharge at no less than the maximum, and then we defined the maximum $1.81. So as long as we have a specific figure in the ordinance, it will come back every year.
Okay. So I actually like the idea of not having a figure and delegating that authority to the board and recognizing that Chief Hall is our representative on the board. And if there are concerns, if everyone else on the board is going to raise it a lot, he's going to come back and say, hey, we've got a problem with the Metza board. That just isn't going to happen. The Metza board is going to, I mean, they're already limited by what the PUC regulates them. So I would be comfortable having an ordinance that did not require it to come to council every year. When it comes to council every year, we always say yes, and it seems like we rubber stamp it and we count on the Metza board and our representative to really take care of it.
Well, you know, it's not like we have a super-long agenda every time. And so it don't take but a few minutes to say, yeah, I just kind of review it. I think for the benefit of the community, we should always look at these sort of stuff and how their expenses are spent.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Yuliberi, could I request that you actually speak into the mic a little bit? I can't hear your questions and your comments.
Sorry about that. I will do that from now on. Sorry.
I have a question for Matt since he's here. Does the new National 988 Emergency Mental Health Services Hotline have anything to do with our local Metza or is that something completely separate?
Not with Metza, but a lot to do with Wesco Dispatch.
Okay.
So Wesco Dispatch has actually been involved in the implementation of that, trying to sort out, okay, you told us we had to do this, now we go figure it out. And Mandy Stolsteimer from Wesco Dispatch has been involved in some of the issues with getting that going.
Sure. So that 988 goes to our local dispatch for mental health, but there is not a fee on every telephone line for that? That wasn't perhaps part of how it was set up? You're nodding. Are you just?
Can you pass the mic? Sorry. She's working on it.
Okay.
She is working on it, but 988 is not.
Has nothing to do with Metza?
With Metza.
Okay, well, then I won't confuse the issue today.
And 988 right now in the nation, it's not all created equal. Every state is kind of in a different phase of where they're at and then the local communication centers as well. So it's still a work in progress.
I won't confuse the issue by dragging it, and then I was curious. I just think these are not monies that are collected by the City of Montrose. These aren't taxpayer monies. This is a fee on individual people's phone lines, and we have a representative on a board to handle it. To me, it isn't necessarily council's purview every year.
If I may. So the state law enables Metza to impose the charge. The members, as a formality of the intergovernmental agreement which controls Metza, the individual members are required to either delegate that authority to Metza or pass an ordinance themselves.
Right.
But it's really tied more to the IGA because the state law is what allows Metza to impose the charge itself.
Okay.
Where is this located, this emergency phone dispatch? Is that all come from the City of Montrose? I remember at one time it was handled by the county, and then for a while there, we had it with the city. And I'm not sure exactly who handles it and who pays the expenses.
I think that's a whole nother conversation that you need to perhaps take offline and have with Chief Hall, who can direct you. You can meet with Mandy Stolsteimer and get up to speed on Wesco Dispatch, but I don't think that's necessarily part of today's discussion. So I think I'm going to go ahead, and unless there's other.
Wait a minute. You know, I'm asking a question, and it's a simple question. All you need to say is it's handled by the City of Montrose, it's handled by the county. That's all I'm asking.
There's an organization called Wesco that does the dispatch for the region. We have a representative on that board, and there's a director of that board. It's, that's the short answer? The long answer is?
No, that's fine. That's all I wanted. That's all I wanted to know is.
So let's move on with this agenda. I don't think we don't make, we don't come to, we don't take votes in work sessions. We're missing one council member. We have one council member abstaining, and you've got kind of two different opinions. So good luck with that.
Okay. I need to do something here. So I will produce an ordinance for you to consider, and it will either pass or not. And if I need to redraft it, I will try again. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I support the idea of you creating an ordinance or a revision of the ordinance that allows for annual adjustments of the rate so that we do not have to see it every year because we do have representation oversight on that or through the person of Chief Hall or our other representatives, that if there is an abnormal thing in there, then they will bring that to us for immediate review.
Okay. We'll do the best I can with that and come back to you with something in writing, and I'll let you take it from there.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Next on our discussion items is the opioid settlement agreement. And I'm going to turn this back over to you again, City Attorney Ben Morris.
Okay. So as you all may know, the drag companies entered into a settlement agreement in regard to the opioid crisis, and Montrose is part of that. The settlement would require that we either opt in to receive settlement monies, which must then be used in conformity with, and I'm using air quotes here, approved purposes that are outlined in Exhibit A of your packets. It's a long, complex list, and it does give you some significant flexibility as to how you use it. The catch, though, is that these monies are dribbled out in small amounts over a really long period. I believe it is 18 years or so. It may be a bit of work to track that, but certainly it can be done by city staff if that is the direction you choose to go. Your other option is to opt out. That means that the money would then go to our region of the state, not specifically to the city, but to, I think it was Region 14. It's the same geographical area encompassed by the 7th Judicial District. That's Montrose Delta, Olathe, San Miguel, Gunnison, and Hinsdale Counties. So it's a very large area, but a lot of these are sparsely populated. So each region, including ours, has its own regional council, the purpose of which is to decide, at least in part, how the money is spent within the boundaries of their territory. I'm going to recommend here opting out as the amount of money is relatively small. It's just under $3,000, $29.25 is the amount for year one. We get a grand total of $26,015 over 18 years. So if you divide that out, it's going to be small amounts throughout the period of the life of this thing. There will be some staff time to track it. It's, again, perfectly doable, but I'm not sure, and this is just my own personal opinion, if it's really worth our while when we have the regions set up who could do this for us at no expense to the city at all. we have the regions set up who could do this for us at no expense to the city at all. So I leave this to you, but I wanted to offer you the choice. And then it is on the council agenda for tomorrow's meeting because there's a deadline at the end of the month to opt in. If you choose that option, I wanted it to be possible for you to opt in without missing the deadline.
I would be supportive of opting out and sharing a large sum of money with our neighbors in the 7th Judicial District.
Mr. Mayor, you have your hand up. Sorry. Go ahead.
No problem. I just wanted to point out that I am on the State Opioid Abatement Council. I am on the Colorado COAC. And one of the things that we have pointed out to a number of our regional councils in our smaller cities is that you're gonna get better bang for your buck putting that money back into the regional funding because of the administration costs of running it is gonna be sometimes in smaller cities, more than the amount of money you're receiving. So I, as Councilor Reed, do support the idea of us opting out of that. We did coordinate with Heidi Williams, the state coordinator, on some of the legislative procedures to do that, and she has been in contact with our attorney, Mr. Morris. And so I think we're gonna be in a good position to follow that up.
I had a bunch of questions about this, but after I heard the amount, I'm thinking that, that it's, it's better that we make a bigger pot someplace else so that we could get some help later on. It just doesn't seem to me that to tie up staff, and we're already short on staff members right now, to go and handle that sort of stuff. I think the mayor has the right idea.
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Uluberry, I would like to say that anytime you wanna sit and have a coffee, and I can fill you in on all of this information, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Yeah, this is a process that's been going on for a long time, and I think the understanding, even when the settlement wasn't done, was that if and when there was a settlement, that we were always gonna be stronger pooling our money, especially in a region like ours. So I'm supportive of us doing that.
There was, there was some talk about how we opt out. I think if we do nothing, technically, we have opted out. But I also think there's a system, this, there's an acronym called COST. I believe that stands for Colorado Opioid Settlement Tracker. And it's just a website. I think we can go in there and signify our choice.
Can you make sure that happens if it needs to?
Well, I'd be glad to do it myself. I had envisioned.
The mayor?
The mayor sitting down and doing it. But I, if you wish to delegate the authority to me, I assume I could do that for you. It's okay.
Yes, Dave?
One of the things that we had previously discussed is that it would be probably better to have the legal department or a representative. We had chosen Matt Magliaro as a public safety as a logical choice for that. The reason being is that the position of mayor rotates every year, and rather than trying to bring a new mayor up to speed at every meeting, that it would be better just to have that as a consistent one person.
Perfect. Thank you. And since Matt's not here, Mr. Marshall, will you make sure he knows that he is supposed to do that?
I will gladly pass this along to him.
Thank you so much.
Since he's not here, we feel comfortable volunteering him.
That's always the way to go.
Any other questions or comments about the opioid settlement agreement that we will be voting on to, well, now that we don't, are we, do we need an official vote to opt out, or is it the default position? Dave, you might know the answer to that better than anybody. Does this need to appear on our agendas tomorrow night if we're not doing anything?
If we are opting out, it is my opinion that we do not need to take formal action on this or a vote. I think just a council nod to legal department to opt out is adequate, but I'm open to other suggestions from our legal department and our staff.
I give the nod.
The attorney's thinking really hard right now.
Well, I was thinking, it's already on the agenda, so I believe it'll, it'll get called for question tomorrow night.
I mean, we can remove it from the agenda. Any advantage?
It's okay with me.
It's pretty common to just remove it at the beginning of the meeting, or we'll repost.
Lots happened in the last 10 years. It's okay with me.
Okay. I just, if we're not taking an action, if our, if our vote is to not do anything, that doesn't seem like we need to do that.
I would be in favor of removing it.
Okay. Okay.
Put that out. Proceed as directed.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda of discussion items this morning is the hub at Montrose Crossing Development Agreement Deadline Extension Request, and I will turn this over to City Manager Bill Bell.
Great. We have Matt Miles with us today. Do you wanna ask him to come up, sit by us? He'll probably be the one talking mostly. I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Sure.
So I'll give a brief just description of what's in the packet. So in the packet today, we have the previous discussions, memo related to that, a developer's agreement, and we have the updated memo explaining the circumstance. We're talking about the hub project near Cobble Creek, the multifamily housing project that Planning Commission and City Council has addressed in the past. And we were working with Mr. Miles to get some multifamily rental housing here into our community. And our goal with all of our previous discussions was to get a building permit pulled by June 1st. Matt talked to us a little bit. Just because of staff time on both sides, I was able to grant a one-month extension to July. But now discussions, I think Matt's gonna talk to you a little bit about the economic climate right now and interest rates and some of those types of things. And he's requesting a 12-month extension rather than just the one month I was able to grant. And because it crosses over in budget years, and we would need to transfer money from this year, what was budgeted this year into a following year's budget, I didn't really feel comfortable doing that on my own. So we're here today to talk to City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I appreciate you guys entertaining possibly extending this. Mr. Frank?
Mr. Miles, your microphone is not on. Thank you.
Is this better?
Push the button. Can you help me now?
Thank you.
Anyway.
You can just leave it.
Okay, okay.
Don't touch it.
I normally don't need one of these. So thank you for entertaining the prospect of extending this a year. I'd like to start out by saying I had no idea that this process would ever take this long. I should, you know, it should be open by now. We got held up in planning, held up for various reasons, and now we're being held up with banking. And it's pretty simple. We've been approved by HUD. We don't have a bank to take out the loan on the secondary market in a economic fashion. So we feel like we have a very, very good chance of pulling this off in the next year, but I can't guarantee that. Meanwhile, if we could get a one-year extension between now and next August 1st, I would be grateful. We're not asking for anything different, just the same documents, the same development agreement for another year.
So my questions are mostly for you, Bill. And that's, how does this, it, since, does the development agreement include some of the incentives that council agreed to in order to see multifamily housing built within Montrose? And if so, do those amounts automatically carry, carry forward to a new budget year, or does council need to approve that again? Can you help me understand that piece better?
Yeah, council, so we originally were excited about partnering on this to help satisfy some of the need for housing. I think staff would say there's still a huge need for housing, so that change, that hasn't changed, even though there are people talking about building right now. The only multifamily that's hopefully gonna come online soon is in Colorado Outdoors with Kurt Sukup's large-density multifamily. So the need is still there. And then we originally talked about budgeting it out of several pots of money, our utilities, water, sewer, building permit fee waivers, so a variety of those. And then ARPA came along, and so then we were able to talk about it at budget time for this year's budget. We could save the utility fund some money by using ARPA for the water and sewer portion of the project and still do building permit fee waivers on top of that and those types of things. That's all outlined in here, the updated memos. And then the actual cost came in at that time, a little bit less than previous. So we don't really have authority as a staff to do anything that obligates past the one existing year budget. So we would need to put it into the 23s budget, and council would have to decide they wanna continue this agreement into the following year and then re-budget those monies.
Okay.
We couldn't just throw it in there. I wouldn't feel comfortable throwing it into, say, the capital fund.
Right.
And letting it roll over without any formal authorization from City Council to do that, since you approve the budget on a fund basis annually.
So really, it's a two-step process. One would be extending the development agreement now, and the second would be when council approves the 2023 budget in November or December of this year.
Correct.
And that was the process.
We wouldn't see another ordinance separately.
Right.
Come before us. It would be included in the overall budget appropriation.
And that's really what we actually saw last year, and that's the, how it was done.
Correct.
Would extending it for a year in any way compromise the ability to use ARPA funds?
So is Shaney here? No. So ARPA funds, with Kendall leaving, I was looking around just to make sure I don't give the wrong answer, but we're all, I think, caught up on ARPA and, and the rules related to that. They've changed a little bit as you go. But as long as we have obligated those funds and earmarked them basically within that first two years, then you have a timeline to build. But then we have our second collection, which is the other 2.3 million approximately for ARPA, that if we had to, we would just obligate it out of that second batch of monies, which then gains us an extra up to five years. So I think we're okay on that.
Yeah.
I was a little worried about that a few weeks ago until I reread some things just to make sure. And then the other important thing to consider is have we already earmarked that second batch of ARPA funds for other projects? And we have not. Our only, if you remember, several months ago, I presented a memo outlining all of the potential ARPA expenditures to City Council, and listed all of the projects, including water and sewer projects around the community, the partnership with Maslow to provide another 70 childcare slots out at Colorado Outdoors, a partnership with the Montrose Recreation District to do a northern satellite location adjacent to the Maslow facility, and then some help for our other nonprofits in the community. We really haven't added much to that list. We've tweaked some of the numbers on the particular projects because, as we all know, construction costs are going up, and those nonprofits don't necessarily have a big bank role to just absorb the extra cost for the, I'm thinking of the MRD project right now. So there are some of those, but we really haven't added millions of dollars of new projects to that list. When we have big projects, I'll bring them before council with an updated list, so you're well aware of what's going on. So we still have over 2 million, probably closer to $3 million available of ARPA funds.
So I, I suspect that this discussion will probably bring about some public inquiry as to the nature of the, and the status of the, the project. And I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but would it be fair to say that the project at this point in time is on hold pending obtaining the financing that's needed for the project?
That's a fair comment.
Thank you.
So it's my opinion that this would be appropriate, given that I think we are still seeing the need for multifamily housing that we were a year ago when we first approved this. I think if magically a whole bunch of multifamily housing dropped out of the sky in the last few months, I might be more hesitant. But it hasn't, and it's still needed, and I'm supportive.
Likewise.
Bill, where are we at on that other project that you mentioned that was actually affordable housing? The, I believe it was out toward the rec department. How are we on that? And what impact would this have on them?
I'm gonna kick that over to Anne. She knows much more about that project than I do.
Okay.
The project you're referencing is next to the rec center, and those developers received low-income housing tax credits from CHAFA in order to build. And that project, primarily, but for six units, so 50-some units, will be low-income housing, meaning that households have to qualify based on their income to be in, to live in that apartment building, and then they pay rent based on what their income is. The, that is different than the development at the, that Mr. Miles is proposing. His development would not be income-restricted, and anyone can live there who can pay rent, essentially. So it'll be a very different type of project. The, we call in planning, the apartments that Mr. Miles is building market rate means that the rents are dictated by the market.
Which could be any amount, really, right?
Yes.
Above $1,000.
It can be whatever the landlord sets a rent at, as opposed to low-income or subsidized housing, which the rents are set based on income. And there's other things like these tax credits that make that kind of project possible.
Okay. Well, actually, my real question was, can these ARP funds be used to help with that infrastructure and for these lower income? And if they can, how are they gonna be impacted if, if we're moving this year's funds into Matt's project for a year or two years from now, depending upon the economy?
My understanding is that we have enough ARP funding to do both, and City Council gave our city manager approval, essentially broad approval, to allocate ARP funding to accomplish certain goals. This was several months ago, and housing is within that. And so I've been talking with Bill Bell about infrastructure improvements for the project next to the rec center that could be done. And it, allocating money to the hub project does not mean we can't allocate money to the other housing project as well, but for the reasons City Manager Bell mentioned, we need to bring this particular project back to council to talk about the funding. So we think for, for example, specifically, we're talking at the project next to the rec center about the road improvements on Ogden that will be necessary. So curb and gutter and sidewalk going to the new apartment building is a perfect partnership for the city to partner on and put in and pay for, for that apartment building.
As well as perhaps maybe sewer and water fee?
Yes. And because this is subsidized housing, you will likely be, face a request to waive some fees for this project in order to make it more affordable.
All right. Thank you.
And that project, they are in design and are planning to break ground next year. So you won't see it happening for a little bit, but they're doing civil design and working with our city engineer on those aspects.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions about the extension request for the hub? We lost, yes?
One more.
Yeah.
On this, it's reimbursement and it's water tap fees and public water service. What is exactly that in relation to? I, I understand the waiving of the fees, but are we also waiving sewer taps and water taps and, and all that?
Remember, whether it's a table break type or a, it should be in the packet.
Yeah, Table 1 on the packet.
Yeah, if you're, are you looking at the?
Reimbursement.
October 28th one that outlines with the original.
Well, this, I'm looking at the one that's in the packet.
Yeah, there's.
So there's things that are waivers, so these would be opportunity costs that we just don't.
So right now, we can't hear you, Mr. Murphy. But I would suggest, Mr. Uluberry, that, you know, that we've been talking about this for a number of years, and I absolutely understand how you wanna get up to speed. I just don't know that a work session is the best place for you to get background information like this.
Well, I could do that in council meetings, if you don't mind.
No, I would, no.
I can just do a quick.
Okay. No, I'm just suggesting.
So I'm not asking for.
No, I'm just suggesting, Mr. Uluberry, that our staff is available to you.
Yeah, but I have a job too.
Sure, but so do all these people.
So I'm trying to do the best I can to fulfill my obligations to the city as well as to my own self.
Sure.
And to be honest with you, the best place, because I've tried several times to get together with staff on other issues, and I've been pushed from month to month, week to week. And this is, in my opinion, the best time for me to get my question answered on some of the issues that come up or are coming up.
Sure. I just, this job does require doing some homework outside of the two meetings.
And I try my best, I can tell you.
I don't think we should be taking the public's time for educational purposes, quite frankly.
It sounds like Mr. Bill has a quick answer for you.
Okay.
And then I would just suggest, as a fellow counselor, that doing some research outside of meetings will really help you, 'cause you keep talking about wanting to get up to speed, and there just isn't enough time in work sessions to get you up to speed.
Well, the work session's on till 12, and some of this stuff goes pretty quick.
So.
Okay, go ahead, Bill, please.
Just quickly, I think the important. Just quickly, I think the important thing to keep in mind is the difference between the fee waivers and then when we talk about utility abatements. And so, and that's outlined on the, on the memo in the matrix. But fee waivers is something that the city manager.
That I understand. It was the reimbursement part I didn't.
Yes, so the, to show the difference between the two, if we're talking about reimbursement on the water and sewer unit fees, those types of things, those will always come before city council. So anything, like Anne just referenced the other project that you were talking about near the rec center. When those, and the reason I didn't mention it in my list, we don't know the exact numbers to that yet. So when they have their project far enough along that they have a building permit worksheet developed by Archie in the Building Services Division, then I have the numbers to look at. And so then I authorize the building permit fee side. But anything on the utility connections, utility tapping fees, utility unit fees, depending on the type of project, that'll come before city council in a request, like Anne was mentioning. So we'll do that for that particular, we already did it for this one, but we'll do it for that next one. It'll come before council. There'll be a memo that says the manager has already waived these building permit fees, and the council's being asked to, whatever the number might be.
I think I read that.
And then we'll take the money out of general fund.
Okay.
Council will take it out of our general fund to pay the utilities to make them whole, so our utility customers don't lose any money. Or we have the opportunity with ARPA, which is unusual, to take it out of ARPA funds to make the utility whole. So that'll be one of those two options. Does that answer?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the Townsend Avenue Intersection Capacity Studies Project Overview. City engineer Scott Murphy. Thank you very much, Mr. Miles, for coming to our meeting.
Thank you, Barbara. This one's mostly just to make council aware of the project going on. So, because there's been a lot of discussion about it over the years. It was a budgeted project. It was within Bill's signature authority, so the product is moving forward and doesn't need formal council approval. But wanted to make you aware so you can have a chance to ask, answer questions and be educated if you get asked about it. So one of the products we budgeted this year was some design and planning related to some of our intersections on Townsend that are experiencing with, as traffic growth occurs and development occurs, experiencing operational and, you know, queue delay type issues at these intersections. The ones we're looking at, I think Mayor Frank's not on yet, but he was pretty excited about East Oak Grove and Townsend. Ogden and Townsend are well-known that have, you know, offset intersections where turn lanes are either offset and you have to jog to get through them due to right-of-way constrictions and just the way those intersections developed over the years. South Fifth and Townsend, we're seeing, just with kind of development in that area, a lot more delays at that intersection than Main and Townsend. And some of the issues we're seeing with that are some of the turn lane queues, pretty much in all directions related to when you're trying to get into those left turn pockets, they fill up and overflow into the main line, things like that. Looking at what changes might be needed as far as turn lane lengths, changing the medians, things of that sort. So the study's kind of two-pronged. The first focus will be if there are any near-term improvements that can be done. So what they'll do is collect counts, look at all the existing volumes, do volume projections out into the future, and then see if there are certain things that can improve the operations. Also do a safety review of all the collision records. But take those and see if there's near-term things we can do, such as changing, you know, like a through right or a dedicated right lane into like a through right to make the lineup better. But then that's a trade-off, obviously, because you could reduce the efficiency of the intersection and throughput by doing those kind of things. But seeing if there are, within the right-of-way we have, if there's low-hanging fruit that we can do to improve their operations kind of immediately. Those are relatively straightforward projects. But then longer term, what those intersections need to look like. Because from, as development occurs, but also if we want to actively try and address those, some of those will require right-of-way acquisitions. So it'll be purchasing additional road width necessary to get additional turn lanes and get better alignments of intersections, things of that sort. So this is geared towards that. The, it'll be done this year with the idea being if we want to work towards more aggressive improvement of some of those intersections that do require acquisitions, we can start working on those in the following years and then start folding projects into our capital, capital planning efforts as appropriate. So Dave, you weren't on, but this is the, this is your favorite. This is the fix for, working towards a fix for East Oak Grove and Townsend that seems to come up a lot in your world, among others. But yeah, just wanted to make you aware of it and happy to answer any questions.
So one of my questions would be traffic counts seem like if you're studying those in the next two months, could really be impacted by the work CDOT's doing on Townsend? And could also be impacted anytime maybe I-70 is closed? Or I would assume these professionals know how to take into account things that are kind of different about the circumstances?
Certainly, yeah, and it's kind of, yeah, it's difficult. Just about every study we do, there's always something weird making them weird. So we try and eliminate those variables. The nice thing about Townsend is it's overnight work. So we definitely, you know, we focus on morning peak, lunch peak, and PM peak, which are over by the time they're done. And then, and then there are seasonal adjustments, you know, through COVID, we had COVID adjustments and all kinds of things. So it's a, it's an art as much as a science.
Okay.
But they, it's definitely front and center on their minds. Woodgate realignment as well. So that one, we'll probably wait on some of the intersections in that area because once that opens next week.
That'll change.
The toll traffic kind of pattern in that area changes, and we want to make sure to capture that.
And it'll probably continue to change as people learn about it. Like, it's not just gonna, like, the very day it opens be the new traffic pattern.
Certainly, yeah, yeah. So we want to give that time to stabilize. But not just delay a whole other year just because of either, so we're going to try and find that sweet spot before. You don't want to do them in the shoulder seasons. You want to get them in those late summer, early fall. Fall peak's just as big with hunting and everything. So those are good times to get it. Once you get into the shoulder seasons, before ski traffic picks up, it is a little bit of a lull that would be less representative.
Less accurate.
Trying to thread that needle for sure.
Perfect.
Scott, I thought I saw a hand going up by the mayor, or he was just waving, maybe? No? Okay.
Any questions from you? Any questions?
It was thumbs up. Nope, nope, nope.
Thank you very much.
I was just really excited that we're actually moving forward on those traffic studies to make sure that we're adequately preparing for the future. Because there's a couple of those intersections that, that, my favorite, East Oak Grove and Townsend, because of the readjustment of Woodgate, is going to change dramatically, and we really need to get up the curb, as Scott knows.
Yep, that'll be great to see. Will you share some of those results with us? Not just when it comes to the project that is going to be a result of the studies, but just in general?
Yeah, once we get our findings, yeah, they'll prepare a little memo outlining near term and long term.
Sure.
Can run over that in a work session for sure.
Thanks. Next on our agenda is our Water Resource Inventory and Master Planning Project. And I think this is really exciting. So back to city engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you. And Lisa, hope this will work with you, Dave. Try and project here, or drag. I'm just projecting the memo, but it might help guide the discussion a little bit. Are you able to see that, Dave?
Dave, can you see that on the screen?
Press the magic button, possibly.
Okay, we can't even hear him now, so. It's the, it's the same memo that was included in the packet, though.
Yeah, and we could, if it works better, I can do without the projection.
So we all have the memo.
Yeah, let me, I guess, let me. I'll, yeah, I'll just peel it. We'll go alone.
Okay, we've got you.
Yep. I'm still here, and I can hear you. I have the memo on my computer. I'm good. I do not need a projection.
Okay, perfect. We'll go that way then. So, yeah, I'm very excited about this project. You know, our predecessors, so this is all surrounded around our water resources and its master planning. Our predecessors have set us up well. I'll kind of start with that. That our previous city, it used to be managed at City Attorney's Department. Prior to my time, it came into my department maybe three, four years ago. And engineering manages our water resources. But the work of our predecessors, you know, both internal, you know, in city management as well as regional, you know, our various irrigation partners, tri-county, federal government, you know, all these things have set us up well. We're in a very unique position here with regard to our water resources. But we kind of view that as, we have water to spare, but not a drop to waste. And we want to really push that kind of culture and mentality going forward. So we're kind of at a, you know, on the, are in, are working towards, or at the pivot point of another, what seems to be another large development boom and growth in our valley. This is a great time to make sure that we are setting up all of our water resources and doing water resource planning to do that smart, going into the future, to be good stewards of what is proving to be a finite resource on the Colorado River. As continued shortages occur, you know, the entire Western United States is under pressure related to water resources. So, you know, with that, we want to use this as an opportunity. And there's been a lot of public engagement and interest around this topic. So we also feel that because of that, this is a great time that people actually come to the meetings and want to talk about this stuff. Whereas that necessarily wasn't the case, you know, 10 years ago. So we're looking to do a comprehensive inventory that has several goals. And I'll run through those of what we hope to get out of this, because I think that kind of helps paint the picture of why we're doing it. One of them is just a master inventory of all our water resources. So we have a good handle on all of it from previous work, but it'd be nice to get it into one place. Mostly for education of various councils and succession planning, and then also the public. So if we, I'm very excited when people ask, where's our water come from? And I'll give them the long, complicated 10-minute answer. But if there's documents that people can go to to learn that, how they were established, the history of our water resources, how, you know, how we're interrelated with irrigation and all that, because we absolutely are, and the importance of all that to our community. So that someone can, yeah, pick that up and within, you know, an hour, generally be up to speed on where we sit and how it all works. Also working for internal succession planning amongst, you know, public works and utilities, things of that sort. We want to use this as a catalyst to guide responsible development, good land use regulations and good water conservation programs. So that's, I think, the crux of, of kind of the public engagement piece of this is we want to talk through, look at where we're at, where we're going. You know, do we have resources available for our entire build-out of our water service area? And kind of from, with that understanding, look at what do we need to do to make sure that we are good stewards of it, but also making sure we can stay ahead and plan for the growth that is inevitably, you know, going to occur. And that's going to include pot likely conservation, potential land use regulations. So as things are coming down, even at state levels on, you know, turf replacement, limiting non-functional turf, things of that sort, if that's something our community wants to adopt. We want to hear from them and understand if, you know, people's general sentiment towards things of that sort before we just go start making up rules kind of thing. And then from an internal standpoint, so internal city operations, if we have areas that are great room for improvement. So good examples are areas that are irrigated by city, turf areas that are irrigated by city water that could be converted over to irrigation water, you know, if the shares are available or if there's a means to have shares available. Getting rid of turf that isn't necessarily doing a lot of work for us. You know, I think of like medians and things of that sort that are pretty dangerous to mow, use a lot of water, damaged streets, things of that sort that may be better, and I'm not saying, when I say xeriscap, I don't mean gravel, but, you know, more desert landscape, more drought tolerant plantings, things of that sort that would still look nice, but aren't, don't need to be mowed and don't, aren't as water intensive. So kind of getting plans in place for those kind of things of where the low-hanging fruit may sit on that so that over the years, we can implement projects to reduce our consumptive use as a city, not just, you know, related to development and growth, things of that sort. One of the, so number three on the goals is related to our service area boundary. So right now, from time to time, we're kind of unique in Montrose that when someone makes a lot, they don't buy the water capacity at that time. They buy it at the time of building permit. You pay your capacity in tap fees, and that's pretty typical of larger systems like ourselves. There are some systems that set up, I think, I believe tri-county has set up this way, that, you know, when a lot is filed, they pay their capacity fees on the front end, which you can imagine, which works in the county at these smaller scales. But you can imagine paying hundreds of thousands of capacity fees for every subdivision and tying up that stuff in perpetuity would be pretty impactful on the ability of development. You know, development's already cash-strapped. And so we need to make sure that within our, so right now, we have, there's, within the Uncoyder Valley, there's different water districts for different water providers. The city of Montrose has its water service area boundary. It doesn't necessarily match city limits. Those were kind of established back when, throughout the decades, based on where the infrastructure is and where it makes sense for various parties to serve. We need to make sure that we have enough water resources to fully build out that service area boundary, to make sure that we can make good on all the kind of current obligations of our water district. Because, and the reason that's important is we get a question to expand our water district from time to time. There's, you know, a couple hundred units that are eyeing, like, right on the fringe. Tri-county doesn't have water lines near it, and they would say, can I just come on to the city's water district? Well, if we say yes to that, we don't want to do that at the sacrifice of the existing customers we're already obligated to within the district. So with a lot of our AMI tools, you know, GIS being what it is, land use tools, there's, we can do some pretty accurate demand projections and see where we sit relative to that so we can make more educated decisions when the question comes up to expand our district. Right now, we get little onesie twosies. We've been granting them. But when, when a large, our threshold right now has been 25 units. If something large comes, we say, we need to wait until we have our head wrapped around this to make sure that we're not doing something short-sighted.
Scott, just a question. Would this, this will include just some future use of perhaps the new water treatment plant that they're proposing up there? Because that'll cover some of the unincorporated areas that are within the boundary, right?
So the treatment plant primarily be outside, or good chunk that'll be outside of our service area. An emergency interconnect, it would definitely serve our service area. But we don't want to get treatment capacity and water resource, water rights conflated. Those are two different things. So the treatment plant is treating existing water resources and water rights. It doesn't create new water rights, if that makes sense. So we're already managed, we're still managing the same pool of water resources available to the city, whether that's with one treatment plant or five treatment plants. It doesn't make more water available, if that makes sense. It just makes more water treatable and in different locations. Does that make sense?
Kinda. So I'll have to mull on that one a little bit, but thank you.
Yeah, so say we have, you know, a 10,000 acre foot pool out of Ridgeway. We use that, we'll use that at both treatment plants. Or collectively, the city and tri-county and all the various entities that have water share, water rights to feed Project Seven. Those water resources will be used the same, whether it's amongst one treatment plant or two. It won't add any additional water resources.
So we'll be, the water resources we have through Project Seven coming down currently to treat, to service our area. And then we have a new water treatment plant proposed up there that's going to be for redundant water use, right?
Correct.
And so we have 10%, just say, using the 10% there. Will we be taking an additional 10% out of this Gunnison Tunnel water to make up for the 10% that's going to go to some other area that's close to our urban?
Yeah, so the way that'll work, there'd be less exchange. So right now, the, our, at the treatment plant on, you know, East Main, that water is treated from the Gunnison Tunnel. But the share, the pool, the water resource pool that's used to feed that is out of Ridgeway on paper. And so we take physical water from the Gunnison, and then do a water rights transfer from Ridgeway.
Okay.
To cover that.
That.
With the treatment plant down in Ridgeway, that transfer will just be smaller.
Okay.
Because some of that'll be using direct feed. We'll actually have actual water out of Ridgeway.
That's kind of like what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
And then, you know, for other longer-range planning elements related to water resources. So understanding what this prolonged drought, that's a very crystal ball question because, you know, these are federal programs, federally managed, and we're into unprecedented territory with regard to the Colorado River and its problems. But trying to understand and quantify what that means for us. So, you know, various risks of, you know, calls coming up the river, federal intervention where these systems are all ratcheted down to all contribute into the pot. It's really an unknown. Hopefully, that'll come into focus here over the next year to two. But we want to be looking at that and understanding that so we can, again, make informed decisions with regard to our water resources and understand those risks. You know, the risks are lower supply. You know, the risks are lower supply, you know, as due to aerification, climate change, whatever you want to call it, supply is trending lower, and more snow is falling as rain and melting off earlier, you know, all the problems that come with that. And that's, that's a very real thing we need to be planning for, because that's, all models indicate that that's our future, and we should be responsible in, in planning for that. And then, another part of that is, is we want to be a local leader in, in this arena. We think it's a responsible thing to do, we think it's good business, we want to help other communities do the same. If there's a community that's maybe smaller than us, that doesn't have the resources, but can piggyback off of a lot of our efforts and, and help to be a model for them, we would, we would love to do that, we're all, we're all in this together, so. So with that, I did include an attachment to this that has kind of a detailed, kind of breakdown that we provided to the consultants to help them give a feel for what we want the final document to look like, all the various elements we want it to include. So, if you want to get deeper into the weeds, there's, there's more information there, but I won't go too deep into that unless somebody wants to.
Scott, for purposes of developing this plan, if I'm interpreting the memo correctly, there's going to be an opportunity for public input, some open meetings where the public can-
Certainly, yep, yep. So, you know, we'll engage major water stakeholders along the way, because we want their input and kind of some of the history and things to call get incorporated. And then when we start talking land use programs, water conservation programs, things of that sort, we definitely want the public's feedback on that, because it, it affects them, you know? And, you know, do they care if, you know, like, say, like, the strip by the airport, do they care if that's green, or if that, would that be better xeriscate, stuff like that? Getting that kind of feedback, even down to that level of granularity of, here's potential projects we see, what do you guys think, are those, is that a good use of our dollars? Is turf replacement a good use of our dollars, things of that sort? And getting, yeah, just gauging the public to make sure that we're making informed decisions.
Thank you.
Regarding the policy especially. So the, we put this out as a request for proposals, we didn't ask for pricing, because this is obviously a very open-ended scope, that'll kind of be co-authored with the city. So we, we wrote it as a, we put a $75,000 placeholder in the budget, we wrote it as a, we're asking for rate sheets and proposals from the various consultants. We did get four proposals listed here. Usually I'm able to get through them ahead of council time, but my entire family came down with COVID last week, so, I'm a little behind. So for now, it's, it's presented as, here's who we, here's the four that we saw, the number is fixed, it's going to be $75,000 contract recommendation, but between utilities and, and engineering, we need to pick that, so before you, so the next council memo would have an actual recommendation for one of these four, but I wanted to keep the product on track timeline-wise and discuss it today. So, that's why you don't see a, a specific recommendation yet.
Are they within budget?
So, they're all rate sheets, is all we got. So, we would work with them on the actual scope and kind of staying within that $75,000.
And we'll see that-
So Scott, that's a not to exceed?
Correct, yep. So it'd be timely materials, not to exceed, so we only pay for what we ask for.
And we'll see that for final approval at a council meeting, once you've determined who to go with.
Correct, yep, that's the intent, if that, yep, that works for you guys.
Sounds great.
You know, as we got into this, it's, it's a little bigger of a, a bear than we thought, and our workloads are, as always occurs, larger than we thought, so we actually think the right thing to do on this is to have this go into 2023. Initially, we were hoping to finish in 2022. Our initial focus in '22 is going to be on a lot of the demand projections, because that's the most immediate question we need answered, because these requests for expansion of our water district are coming up almost, I would say, almost weekly. You know, if you look at a lot of these communities that, you know, in the development world that don't have water, have uncertain water, we have a lot of certainty, people are, it's, it's very favorable for development, people are interested in that. So we want to, again, make sure we're doing it right. So, we would have a little bit of carryover into 2023's budget, so you'll see a budget request for whatever we think that carryover will be, probably about half of the project. And then, hope to be wrapped up by the third quarter of 2023. And then the product itself will be managed by engineering, and, and kind of as I alluded to earlier, is I think this will kind of be a co-authored document, there's a lot of internal stuff and operation stuff that we need to talk about and include at our level, so ultimately, feel the, and deliverable be a, a product from both the consultant and the city. And then, you know, yeah, folding in a lot of the public feedback, we're just a little closer to the ground when it comes to that stuff, so, and we've set that up with the consultant, so. Hopefully I didn't brush over that too quickly, but happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. No, it makes sense, I'm really excited that we're gonna, that we're gonna approach our water in that way, and really look at our resources and do a master plan for water, that's exciting.
Yeah, and then I think, you know, speaking to master plan too, this, probably the next revision of the comp plan, probably have a heavy water emphasis, and this will serve as a starting point for that too, so this can carry forward in the comp plan in the next, you know, the next decade revision in '20.
Thanks.
Twenty thirty.
Any other questions or comments?
I think it's a great idea. I think that looking to, to the future is something that's important for Montrose, as long as we can continue to afford it. And the only thing that I look forward to in the future would be some kind of a traffic study to see how we accommodate growth in the county and in the city, both, so.
Okay.
Other than that, thank you.
Thank you, we're going to move on to victim assistance law enforcement, or the Vail Grant Resolution. This is one of those other things I think we do every year, so, thanks for sticking in there with Chantel. And now you and Chief Hall are gonna tell us a little bit about this.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We come before you today, myself and Chal, Chantel Bainbridge are victims' advocate. We have, as we normally do, every two years, our Vail Grant Cycle, and Vail stands for Victims Assistance to Law Enforcement. So, every year when I present the opportunity to take advantage of this grant, I give a little bit of an overview of what it is and how our victim services person essentially operates. So, in the state of Colorado, victims' services is statutorily mandated to law enforcement. So in other words, we don't have a choice, we have to, and of course, it's the right thing to do, provide victim services to crime victims in our community. There are mechanisms within the community and also federally that allow us to pay for Chantel's salary. So, we, every two years, take advantage of two different grants that pays for Chantel's salary. One is the Victims Assistance to Law Enforcement Grant, and we apply for that one every year, and we ask for $28,000, which is half of Chantel's salary. There is another grant called VOCA, which is a federal Victims Assistant Grant that we apply for every two years, and that pays for the other half of Chantel's salary. In the last 10 years, we've seen an increase in Chantel's usage to crime victims, we've also seen some recent legislation that has increased her, I would say, time commitment to victims, and also to when she services victims, and I'll let her go into that a little bit more. But today, we're coming to you to request permission to actually ask for an additional position, another victim's advocate, to be paid for with the same model, a half of a salary through the Victims Assistance Law Enforcement Board. And so, at the end of this, if it's all successful, we would essentially be employing two victims' advocates within the Montrose Police Department with the intent to have them entirely grant-funded. So with that, I'll turn that over to Chantel, and she can talk to you about some of the reasons why we're requesting this.
So Apple is making her way around to meet everybody. Just so you know, if you have a nose tickling ya. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be heard today. The one thing that I wanted to point out was I did provide you with some statistical information, and that is in reference to the number of crime victims that we serve. It's not all of them, but some of them, which will differ from the number of cases that we actually investigate. And the reason for that is, we often see cases, or cases that we investigate that have multiple crime, or multiple victims within that case. So, the number of victims that I serve can, last year, we had an elder abuse with that had 39 victims, so that's kind of an example of what we're talking about. So, the big one that we have seen, and it would be from January to June 30th of last year versus this year, the first half of this year, we've seen a 91% jump in the number of sex assault victims that we have served. The majority of those victims were victims of child abuse, which quadrupled since last year. We've seen a 41% rise in domestic violence cases from last year on our assaults, we have seen a 30% rise in those, again, this is just the first half of the year. And our burglary, and I think part of the reason our burglary numbers have risen is because we have added another crime to the Victims Rights Act, which is second degree is, or, I'm sorry, different crime, second degree burglary of a dwelling, that was added this year, actually it was added last year, I believe. So we went from one to 12 this year. My on-scene responses has risen by 67%, so that, what that looks like is an officer, when they go on scene, if they feel like a victim would need my assistance, they may be extremely traumatized, may need some additional assistance, they will call me out, or the victims will also request my assistance at that point in time. So that has risen 67%. My in-person contacts has risen to 64%, or by 64%, and what that looks like, that's part of the on-scene, but that's also includes victims who might come into the police department. Let's see, what else do I have? So, within the past couple years, we have added quite a few crimes to the Victims Rights Act, one of which was on the list to be approved this year, it did not get approved yet, it might go on next year, but we're not quite certain yet, so, we've had eight, two of which were this year, so first degree arson, criminal invasion of privacy this year. Last year, we had an additional two, which was harassment as a bias-motivated crime and second degree burglary of a dwelling. The Victims Rights Act continues to grow, we've seen that most recent, in the most recent years. And then, which means that we're going to have additional crime victims, because we continue to add more crimes. And then, this year, we have a 48-hour bond hearing, so, your victims' assistance folks within law enforcement, we are responsible for notifying victims of protection orders. And so, in our jurisdiction, we contact victims prior to the advisement hearing to get their requests on the protection order, what type of contact they would like, if they want to be present, things like that. So now, due to the new legislative update, we now work on Sundays as well. So, we try to get that information before, so that they can comply with the 48-hour bond, so we do a weekend advisements, the Sunday advisements. In addition to that, the state has advised us that we have to also take into consideration failure to compare, failure to comply, and contempt of court cases, if it was, if it, if the original crime was a victims' rights crime, so that has also taken up a large majority of our time. And an example of that is I had two this, I would say I had two this weekend, but we're covering for Delta on some of the weekends, that we had to put into arrest watch. So, we're, we're constantly on, so I'm constantly checking my email to make sure that we're, making sure those victims are notified of the arrest before that person's arrested. We have additional things that we have added to my particular job, which would be victims' rights training, so, this year alone, I've done four, with two more that are scheduled for outside agencies. I've taught two academy classes, we have the dog handler, so, Apple's our facility dog, so what I do with her is, yeah, I'm going really fast, I know.
No, no, I was just curious to what the dog, the, the dog handler are-
Okay.
I mean, are dogs victims that we have to take care of too?
So, what I do with Apple is, her role is to minimize the negativity, I mean, it's, yeah.
It's a dog that we have?
Yeah, I'm the dog handler, yeah. So, I'll take her to cases, especially with children, and we will meet with children with Apple, which reduces their stress levels and the anxiety during the reporting process. And what we would like to do with her is continue her training on to get into maybe the courts, so that when we meet with her on a case, or meet with kiddos on the case, we can continue through that court case with her, because the system is, is really stressful, it's, it's not easy by any means, and it has been proven that a dog can reduce that stress level. So, that's what we hope to do, we're not able to get her training, because I don't have the time to do it. And then I'm part of the peer support team as well, which, Apple also comes into play with peer support, and I go around and make sure the officers start their day with Apple, and it just kind of, it helps reduce the amount of stress in their job as well. That was really fast, I'm sorry, any questions?
It's working really well.
Oh, good. I was just letting her walk around and meet everybody, so.
Is your stress level reduced by having a dog at your feet? Any other questions?
No. I'm really upset that I didn't get the dog nozzles here.
Yeah, sorry. It's a great program, and I'm so glad to see we're looking at expanding our services.
Thank you, so-
Yeah, I would say, I would say that I'm really, it's really evident that the additional person is necessary, it is really evident that your workload has increased exponentially, and I think we all, I'm going to speak for us, just as a group, and say, we understand that we need definitely to help support you in whatever you're doing, because your benefit to the community is impressive.
I would second your comment.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, and thanks for coming to our work session with the dog-
Thank you.
-with Apple.
Can Apple stay?
Can Apple stay?
Stick around. So I can, you guys, can we run or leave?
We have our Apple here.
Yep. So next, we move on, those are all of our, our scheduled discussion items for today, and so next on our agenda is General City Council Discussion.
I don't have anything.
Do you have any, Mr. Frank, do you have anything for General City Council Discussion? Mr. Ullaberry, do you have anything for General Council Discussion?
No, I'm just entertaining Apple there, just to see, that's a great idea.
Yep, she's, she is a calming presence. I don't have anything either, so we'll go on to Staff Comments, which is next on our agenda, and we do have one item for Staff Comments on the agenda, and then we'll get to anything else anyone wants to add. But the agenda item is an update on the public safety complex construction, and that is Chief Hall and Public Works Manager Jim Scheid.
Yeah, thank you, Council. So, we're getting closer and closer on this huge project, so, if you can hear them, still working next door, so I want to give an update, kind of give some dates for some items that will be completed here soon. So what's an exciting item, actually, will be paving First Street tomorrow, tomorrow and Wednesday, actually, so, that, the X-tray of the building, that's one of the things that just kind of, you know, completes it. They're working on stone caps for the planter seat walls this week, so those things, I'll start to see the X-tray really start to look done. And that's leading us into, by the end of the month, we'll have a TCO on the building. What that allows us is to move in furniture and to start operating the building in, in some way. It basically allows occupancy of the building, but it won't be finished, so a temporary CO is, again, allows the building to be used, but it's not finished. So there are a few lingering items that we are waiting on, and kind of material issues, which we've been dealing with throughout the entire project, but have been able to kind of manipulate our schedule as we go to kind of fit the, the odd things that may not be available. And some of them now, like the arched windows, the frames that go in there is an item that we've been, it's been delayed several times, and they, again, kind of adjust their schedule, but getting down to the point now where that is an item that's not going to be finished at TCO. They are awaiting arrival dates, it kind of was supposed to be installed this week, and now it's next week, and we're kind of getting this, this push down the line, and getting to the point where we're not real comfortable with a, with a date yet of saying, here is the actual grand opening, I guess kind of where we're going, is trying to establish a grand opening of the building, a ceremony and community tours and everything for, for that. We, we are looking probably in the mid to late September range for that right now, but, but even still a little bit hesitant on committing to a date until we know that these final items are gonna be here. Just because we don't want to do a grand opening without, you know, without these little pieces, you know? They, they are coming, they will be installed, but we'd, we'd really want that kind of grand opening to have every last piece in there. And it also helps with when we move in that there's no work to be done after we move into the building. So even though the arch, the tops of the arch windows is probably the one, the biggest item, there's a couple hardware items and things we'll be waiting on until September, but the big worry right now is those arch windows, so. Another big item that you'll see coming soon would be the parking structures and the parking that's on the south side of the building. That will be paved in August and then probably the last two weeks of August, we'll start to see those covered structure or covered parking structures go up. Also, kind of looking at beginning of September timeframe for that to be finished. But, so more to come. When we have good dates for a grand opening, we will announce that and get those pushed out as soon as we, we have those. But as of right now, we're kind of, we want to be sure we have everything before we announce that date.
Sounds like, oh, go ahead.
He had us end up first.
Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say right now that the, the governor, our attorney general, state representative, and our state senator all have expressed a direct interest in coming to that grand opening. So we're really looking forward to hearing a little bit more firm date on that so we can let our elected officials know as well.
Okay, yeah, we will, we will let you know as soon as we, as soon as we know.
My question is, is the alleyway that goes through there, will that go all the way through? The reason why I ask is recently I, I saw a city utility or dump truck or trash truck having to back in there, pick up the trash and then go out. And I'm thinking that at one time that was a, a, a straight-through road. And is that still gonna be a, a, a straight-through alleyway or, or is the city gonna be backing their trucks in there and, and going like this and, and...
So there, there won't be an alleyway that goes all the way through. There'll be one here right behind the Alex Building that will turn out either into parking here or by Region 10. There'll be a gate that goes into the secure parking area for PD. So the alley does not continue through. But off of South First Street, there will be an alley access road on just the side of Straw Hat Farms. So that way, a trash truck can come off South First, go south down the alley access road, and then east down the alley.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. And they can actually do that now. We have a temporary alley access road on the east side of Straw Hat Farms right now. So they shouldn't have to, unless we had something closed. Maybe we had something closed off for the paving that we're working on now, but even during construction, they shouldn't have to be backing into the alley.
Yeah, I was just curious because I was in the area and I saw this happening. I'm thinking, oh, and they were still digging everything out the road and, and I'm going, well, just a question I had.
So even though paving on First will take place starting tomorrow, will First remain closed pending the actual opening?
It will, and this probably leads in a little bit of Blaine's operational side of it, so.
Yes, that's a good question. So right now, we have our patrol division that's housed in the bottom of actually this building. And so they've got to be close to their vehicles. The best place that we could come up with was closing off just the west side of the construction entrance there on South First, right there at the intersection of Cascade. And so in order to vacate that, the building has to be done so that we can park in the correct place behind the building and then use the building. So there, there could be some savings time there of maybe a week to a week and a half at most where we could move patrol into the building and use the backlot and open up South First. But especially if we have a more of a larger building celebration with, you know, some of our state-elected officials, it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to move into the building first. And I can kind of give everyone an update on what Bill and I were thinking and Lisa as far as tours for that week. We were looking at a Tuesday afternoon, you know, speeches and grand opening and things like that. Bill had suggested possibly engaging some of our local food truck vendors so that we could provide a meal to everyone that attended. And then, once that concluded, we'd immediately go into public tours of the building. Hopefully, if it works out with forum that following Wednesday morning, we could then host the forum in the new community room and then host another public tour combined with two evening tours that Wednesday night and then Thursday night for those individuals who would like to take advantage of that. We'd close, or we'd cap off that week with a Saturday farmer's market kind of open house, another tour. And then after that, we would start our operation and move in. There's just so many sensitive things that we have that we would move in, that we would have to limit some of our, our, our tour operations. Honestly, I really, I don't really want to do that. I want to run people through detectives. I want to run people through patrol. We won't be able to run people through evidence, but, you know, it's, that's how that goes. But I think it, I think as it stands today, that's what we're looking at as far as our, our operations.
So what you're saying is you'd like the public to be able to see most of the building before you move in sensitive items?
Absolutely.
And you're looking at a Tuesday afternoon through a Saturday morning?
Correct.
You're just not sure when that Tuesday through Saturday will be?
Yeah, we're, you know, we, we spoke with Shaw, who, and they are doing a great job. They are working very hard to include maybe even a Plexiglas option for the, for the arches because we don't want to get rid of them. That was the whole point of those arches is that they matched the Civic campus look. And so they're working hard. They said probably mid to late September, but they don't know yet either. It's just a moving target, so.
Thanks for that update. I have a quick question. What kind of landscaping is going to be done around the building? And what's the schedule for that, given it's the hottest time of the year? I don't know much about landscaping, but I would guess it's not when you plant a new tree, but I don't know.
Sure. So actually, we have a landscaping walkthrough or meeting planned for this Thursday. We've talked about it. We're thinking some type of, you know, in a larger bush because landscaping also works to, you know, keep people also right directly off of the building. So other than that, I'm not sure. We'll know more here and, and we will be happy to come back at maybe the first August work session. If they provide us some plans, we can show them to you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other staff updates or comments for our work session? Okay, see none, then that would...
Scott.
Oh, Scott, sorry.
I was just gonna say real quick for the portion after this, for the, if anybody that wants to take a look at the new Sunset Mesa tank and pump house, we can just drive up, you know, have to go out to Trupita and come up Sunset Mesa, and then you can just park. The gate will be open there. You can park inside the gate, outside the gate, anywhere is fair game. You'll see us up there.
Okay, great. Who's planning on, are you gonna go up, look at the water tower? Are you gonna go up and look at the water tower?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Thank you. Not at this time.
Is anyone going up to look at the water tower?
Well, that's the case.
I mean, I, I was, but, I mean, I know that's the kind of thing that Dave would love to see.
And I'd like to do it, but I just can't do it.
Should we...
I'd say, maybe let's just make it a one-on-one, so if anybody ever wants to take a look at it, let us know and we'll...
I'll defer to another day then, and maybe Dave and I can coordinate and see it at the same time or we can figure that out. Is that okay?
Yep, yep.
That doesn't ruin, like, you didn't have a red carpet out there waiting for us right now?
No, it just rolls up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that would be the end of our work session then for today. We'll see you all tomorrow for our regularly scheduled city council meeting at 6 o'clock.
Good job.
Thank you.